Welcome and evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regular school board meeting of the independent school district number eighty-two. It is five P M on June second, twenty twenty-five. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we are looking for approval tonight's candidate agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero. We have no citizen comments tonight, so we will move on to approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero. Now, we will move on to item number six, collaborative connections, and I will give the floor to Superintendent Eric Olson on the resolution of acceptance of gifts.
All right. Excitedly, we have the following donations that came forward. Anonymous for two thousand five hundred, and this purpose is to pay for the boys' tennis coaches. Monocello VFW, a thousand dollars for the Monty Python's robotics team. All Elements Incorporated, one thousand dollars for the Monocello fishing team sponsorship, and Central Minnesota Arts for two thousand five hundred twenty-three dollars for the community strings program going on this summer. Yeah, so I'm excitedly, like I said, bringing these forward to you. Once again, our community has helped themselves to help provide additional support for these amazing opportunities for the kids.
Therefore, be resolved by Monocello School Board number eighty-two to grateful accept the fund donations. Anonymous, two thousand five hundred dollars to help pay for boys' tennis coaches. Monocello VFW, a thousand dollars for the Monty Python robotics team. All Elements Incorporated, a thousand dollars for the Monocello fishing team sponsorship, and Central Minnesota Arts for two thousand five hundred twenty-three dollars to contribute to the community strings program.
Second.
Moved by Jeff Pegley, seconded by Mary Bartel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero. All right, now we're on to item number B, celebrating our twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five student representatives and their final report, so I will give the floor to you, Willa.
It's kind of end of the school year, we have, sports are wrapping up. I know baseball is playing right now, I think. So they're looking really good for the end of the season. Track is doing very well. They're looking to send a good handful of athletes to state in the next two weeks. Boys' lacrosse is still in sections, they'll be in semifinals. Girls' lacrosse, we did end our season last week. Boys' tennis ended a few weeks ago, they sent one pair of doubles to state. They did very well. Other than that, we had the back lorry service, which went incredibly well with a good number of students showing up. It was a great way to celebrate our seniors. Then we had senior sunset hosted by student council, which was very well attended. We had students on the field for about three hours. There was food, drinks, we played games, we had the parachute that hopefully some of you remember playing with in elementary school. It was just a really good night. We're looking forward to the graduation ceremony, which is in the coming week on Friday. And yeah, we had our last day of school last Friday, which was a half day. That included...
Oh, look. Hey, Alyssa, you can go right up there and join Willa.
Yeah, our last day just included a senior standoff where our history teachers did a rap, which included all of us in it, which was really fun. And then we got to say goodbye to all of our high school teachers. You got the option to either go to Pinewood or Little Mountain to say hi to elementary school teachers, and then we all ended at the middle school. So it was a great day.
Do you have anything to add? The ending of the school year this year?
The ending of the school year was a success. I really enjoyed it. I didn't grow up in a Monty School district, however, I do feel at home, and going to see the elementary school and all the children, just, you know, like, chant and be happy, was, was a great feeling, yeah.
Yeah, they were very excited, it was super fun.
Yeah.
We're looking forward to it. Almost done.
Board, do you have any questions?
Yeah, any questions?
Sure, what's next?
For myself, I'm going to be going to the University of St. Thomas, right now looking to study international business and business analytics, with the potential of going into law, so let's see.
I'll be attending U of M for nursing.
Very good.
Very excited.
Same stuff. Well, I know we've really appreciated you guys here, and a couple's playing baseball right now, but the three of you did such a fantastic job this year. You did so well representing the student body, bringing your ideas, giving your opinions when we were asked, which we put you on the spot a couple times, and, and you guys did so great. I know a couple of you were a little apprehensive on, is this one thing I should be adding on to my plate, but hopefully you're taking away more, and now you can add this on to your type of experiences that you've experienced, and we are just so excited we've got to see you guys become just awesome leaders and representing in all different areas of even athletics that you guys are in. We're excited to see what you guys do with that now in the future and your next, your next journey.
Yeah, it's been really good speaking to you guys for the year, and whenever you're back in town, you're more than welcome to stop by the board and see where we're covering and just fill us in with how everything's going.
And we do have a little...
And I know I have two, like, highlights that I just have to share. So my two highlights, this was the first year I've ever done a student-led podcast, and to be with you three and myself and do something that's a little outside my comfort zone, but be with you three and see your leadership and see your knowledge and your depth of knowledge as, like, really worldly citizens, like, you might be seniors, but how you consumed your school experience was obviously absolutely amazing because you understand things that, like, you hope as a superintendent that, that your, the staff, the administration, your teachers all the way through the system are, are getting you prepared to, to be able to stand up and do the things that you do and speak eloquently as you do, and as important as staff are, I also know that obviously your families are huge contributors to who you are as people, and I just want to say that that was my first highlight. I was so proud to walk alongside you during that time, and I think our episodes are pretty cool. We kept getting better and better, and there's two more to release coming up here in the next newsletter. And then my second highlight was truly that listening session last week, asking you to, to come and be part of a community-wide listening session and giving you no other forewarning, but hey, would you come and support us so that we could have a student perspective? And by the end, the adults were almost, like, they, like, just give it to you, to you, Willa, like, those forty-something-year-old people can, like, speak for us, but you really, you really calmed the situation as administrators. I think I was proud of how we handled ourselves, but you guys just brought a whole new depth of deep knowledge for people to consider when they, when they go through their life and experiences with their children in school, and you gave them, like, more actionable plans and to look at it maybe differently, instead of just having it be an administrator, which sometimes maybe can feel like a boss versus them, you gave it a whole new massaged perspective that I'll never forget. It was absolutely a top-one, two educational experiences for me in my whole, you know, twenty-nine-year career, so, like, it was outstanding. And so all, all three of you have just meant so much to me, and I think we're taking the board direction of me to bring this to a different level, and you guys brought it to a different level. It wasn't really me, so thank you.
Well, thank you guys so much. I mean, just this opportunity, at least speaking for myself, has been incredible, and I've done so many things from speaking at the state capitol, just things I never thought I would do, being up here, speaking about real issues, I, yeah, it's incredible, and thank you guys so much for creating that open space to where, at least for me, I really felt listened to and, like, valued in what I think, which is sometimes hard being a senior. People don't always see you that way, but you guys really have created such a good space for us, and thank you.
I totally agree. Thank you.
We'll just stay right there. On behalf of the board, and we'd like to just present you with a little college gift basket, and then also...
Everything.
Oh, my God.
For college.
Thank you so much.
Right. Thank you.
Devaney, if you want to come on up and get a picture, or, up? Jimmy, you want to be in the middle, or you want to be in the middle?
We can be in the middle.
We'll do a little hook in here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
There's cake for anybody back there. We were cutting and delivering, but if you didn't get a piece, please stop by the cake table, and you get a piece of that delicious cake celebrating our three students.
All right, and as usual, you're invited to stay, or if you need to head out, we understand.
Look at that.
We love it. All right, next, we're going to move on to number seven, teaching and learning. Our first item is our Monocello High School music trip to Europe Spring twenty twenty-seven presentation. I'd like to bring up Laura Mullen.
Did I pronounce that correctly? Flara Mullen. Flara Mullen, yeah. Got it. I appreciate your asking. Thank you. Thank you. Twenty twenty-seven. Indeed. Hello, everyone. I, this is like the first time I've met you all, I think, in this kind of scenario, and it's taken the entire school year. I'm Dr. Flara Mullen, I teach choir at the high school. I've had a wonderful year with these students, and so much so, I wanted to plan a trip with them in two years in hopes that, that we can have this great experience together, and not just as the choir teacher, but as a music department as well. So I'm representing all of the music department on this proposal. So I'm really excited about this trip. I had the opportunity to go on an EF tour this spring break, and it just, it was a once-in-a-lifetime experience, just learning about all the history and culture of the places that we went, just seeing the students' excitement, how excited they were about learning about the trip, the different cultures, the different countries, the history, all of that, and so it got me really excited to, to plan something here specifically for our music students. So my hope is that we have the MHS music students get a firsthand experience of Western classical and European pop music. They'll explore four different countries, so they'll get a rich history of classical and traditional music, but they'll also have an opportunity to learn about the history and culture that created that type of music and why we still perform it in the classroom today. EF's goals are listed below as far as what they try to develop and create for students while they, they go on these, these types of tours. So the requested travel date is, assuming, spring break is going to be March twenty-eighth through April fifth. This is a nine-day tour, because educational, these EF tours do not settle on anything prior to three months, well, I shouldn't say settle on anything. The itinerary, flights, hotels, all of those finalized activities occur ninety days before the trip. So everything that I'm presenting to you now is the highlights, it's the hopes of the trip, the nine-day tour, but just keeping in mind that we won't know everything finalized until we know who is registered for the trip is the big thing. So the trip could change as far as the earliest departure being March twenty-seventh, and then the latest arrival being April sixth. It's just a one day on each side, but the hope is that Saturday through Monday for the trip. It's a nine-day tour, visiting four different countries. We have Germany, Austria, Slovakia, and Hungary, so very big space, but very wonderful places to be. Some of the questions that were, were, that you might have as far as hotel combinations and foods and meals, this is, again, some of this, most of this information is in the packet that I provided you, but hotels will be outside the city, they're never really in the city center of the larger cities that we're going to, mostly just providing safety, making sure everything is clean, the quality's great, and also providing minimal travel time. We don't want to, because everything is so inclusive and we have our own travel via coach bus to and from certain activities, they never really want to put students in a, in a awkward or unsafe situation by doing it by public transportation, so that's one of the biggest reasons why we stay outside of the, the main city area. There will be seven nights in the hotel with private bathrooms, so students will feel like they have their own privacy. The group stays together, we never go apart, including the group leader. So as soon as we get off of our plane in Munich, we meet our group leader for the entire trip, and they stay with us the entire way. They stay at the same hotel, they do the same restaurants, we go everywhere with our group leader, and so that sense of security is, is really great to have, knowing that they know where we're going, who to contact, they have that immediate support in case we ever need it. And then all chaperones will be assigned, a group to look after, and EF's policy is every six students or adults that sign up for the trip, you get a chaperone. So we're, I'll get to that in a second. Meals will be provided to students in a very fun and cultural experience, and so any dietary restrictions will be taken into account. Breakfast and dinner for this particular tour will be included, and then there'll be an opportunity for students to kind of explore on their own during the free time in the itinerary, which isn't a hundred percent set yet, to go out and explore some local cuisine on their own. Continuing on with a little bit more information about hotels and food and meals, we're hoping for a minimum of twenty-four students or adults, and I say adults meaning that as the music students have this opportunity, we would love it if maybe mom or dad or grandma or grandpa wanted to maybe come along on the trip as well. So we are offering that as well. We would like to have a minimum of twenty-four and then no more than forty, just enough to fill a bus. If we have more than forty that are interested, of course, it's a conversation that we'll have to have amongst the music department, and we'll be very excited if we have more than forty that want to come. All, one important factor, which I think is really great, all adults that will be on the trip, even the chaperones that are teachers who work in the district, they'll all have to complete a background check as part of the EF safety, to make sure we're all good to go, they have everything covered. Room assignments will be made by me, and of course, they'll follow school policies as far as what's required for out-of-school activities. I will allow students to be able to provide some input because they're going with their friends, and of course, if families would like to stay together in the same room, they absolutely can as well. As I mentioned before, nothing's really set in stone until about ninety days before the travel, so once, once we figure out the exact days that we're going, and they'll have the exact flights, we'll be able to navigate whether or not, how we want to get to and from the airport. Could be one of those things where it's easier for students to meet down at MSP, or we, or we might get a bus. So this is a map of where all we're going and kind of just a little idea of what we're going to be exploring, at least for those nine days. Quite a big space. I had the opportunity, the, the trip that I went on, and this year, we went to Budapest, Vienna, and Prague, and just, like, loved it, loved it, loved it, loved it. So when this trip came up, I was like, absolutely, more time in Budapest, more time in Vienna, you've got it. Okay, so some of my highlights I have for the itinerary, for our Munich visit, these are just some pictures, absolutely not all-inclusive, but the Munich Cathedral, Newtown Hall, Hofbrathaus, the Olympic Stadium, the residence, and the Marion Platts, so just all fun places for students to see history and culture, get a little bit of an idea of music and where it's coming from. The, the largest part of the Sound of Music or Sound of Europe tour, I feel like, is going to come a lot from the Salzburg region, as we have a Sound of Music theme tour, so we'll get to see some of the places that they got to video or, or film, as well as see the structures and, and just the scenery, it's going to be fantastic. We added the Salzburg salt mines, I got a tour of all the things Mozart, so that right, that picture on the right is the birthplace of Mozart, which is great, and as far as I remember, at least reading a little bit in the tour, we'll get to, get to see the, the church that he frequently performed at and all those types of things, so it's really great. On our way out of the Salzburg region, we'll get to visit the Mahlhausen concentration camp, so students will get a little bit of history from a different perspective, and then the Schonbrunn, Schonbrunn Palace. We'll continue our Vienna visit with Ringstraße, the parliament building, the Hofbrath Palace, the CC museum, and then the Haus der Musik is a hands-on music museum where the students will be able to create music in different facets, and then we'll also have an opportunity in Vienna to see a classical concert of some sorts. Again, we just don't know what the ticket is, or what the concert will be, but likely orchestral classical concert, Mozart, Haydn, could be Beethoven, could be anything. And then our last little portion of the, of the highlight trip for Budapest is to see Hero Square, the castle district, Matthias Church, which is fantastic, a fun time at the Budapest baths, and then see a Hungarian folk performance, just to highlight a few. Again, these are pictures that are, don't even do justice, I think, as to, to what the students will see. As we get into and talk into a little bit about the cost and what is included in this, you'll see that the price may seem a little bit high, but when we're thinking about everything that's included, it seems, it seems something that, that warrants that lifetime opportunity and experience for students as far as airfare, having the safety of a full-time tour director, all the accommod, hotel accommodations being thought out and well-planned and safe for all the students, meals, overnight security, allowing the students to be able to have high school and college credit opportunities, if this is something that we want to look into for sure, twenty-four-hour emergency service, illness and accident coverage, all those types of things.
What's a personalized giving page?
That is for fundraising, so EF create, allows each student to create a personal profile as far as being able to make payments for the trip, and so that they can set up their own GoFundMe page that they can set out to community members, family members, and it shows the highlights and what they're doing exactly on this trip, and then, and the people can donate to that. As I said, this is a twenty-four-seven tour director, emergency support, overnight security, background checks, and of course, they really highlight the fact that a lot of the, the chaperones that get, we would encourage the chaperones, be teacher chaperones, people within our district, so. The total cost for students is four thousand four hundred seventy-four dollars. If we have an adult, a parent that would like to go, it's five thousand two hundred and four dollars. I'm promoting this and trying to get ahead of this as much as possible to lower that payment for those students on a monthly basis. Eighteen months, assuming that I introduced this in September, that'll be about eighteen months for the students to be able to fundraise music, or fundraise, fundraise money for the trip. Included, we, we want to think about the round-trip airfare, breakfast and dinner, all those types of things are included in that, that cost, and it's approximately two hundred and fifty dollars per month, assuming payments start in September. Fundraising ideas, we're going to do Haggy's Pizza, Butterbraids, Charleston Wrap, and Kaffoo's Grocery Bagging, which has been successful. Per previous director, those are things that he said were very successful with the Monocello High School choir program, and so those are things that I'd like to continue as hopefully the community sees that as, as recognizable. The cost of the trip can be divided into monthly or bi-weekly payments. I have a slide here that shows you a little bit more. Students have the, the option to create that profile and then pay however they would like. There's an initial registration fee of ninety-five dollars for the trip, which is a risk-free enrollment, meaning they have up to almost a year before the trip to be able to cancel, and they get all their money back from the trip. What else would I like to say about this part? The final payment has to be completed thirty days before, before travel, and the students, all, all payments and all, all of the money handling is all through EF, has nothing to do with this, with the school at all. Here's a slide that I was just referencing as far as being able to make bi-weekly payments or monthly payments. This is something that the student will set up, and it's an automatic thing. They're also open to pay in full anytime they want to, or make manual payments where they want to pay more than their, their, their setup, bi-weekly or monthly payments. One thing that I thought was really important, and what they really highly encourage all of the guests to have, is this Travel Protection Plan Plus. They're also open to pay in full anytime they want to, or make manual payments where they want to pay more than their, their setup, bi-weekly or monthly payments. One thing that I thought was really important, and what they really highly encourage all of the guests to have is this Travel Protection Plan Plus, where everything is covered as far as your payment plan, flight delay, tour interruption, baggage, property damage, maximum refund available. If anything has to be canceled, you're getting everything, it's all covered, which I think is great. And then, this is just another, another little slide for the cancellation fee and the registration.
All right, well, that was fantastic. How exciting. I want to go on that trip. Like you said, I mean, you hit it, you know, it's a trip of a lifetime, it's pretty cool. All the places you get to see, I've been to Budapest, Hungary before, so, pretty neat. But, Board, do you guys have any questions?
I think it's just similar to like the Spanish program, with them going on their trip. Just kind of following the same schedule.
And then, is there a desire to make this a two-year reoccurring every two years, to make this going?
Would love to. Of course, it just kind of depends on, you know, student interest. So, this is kind of that first trial run, but it would be great to, to do a music trip like this. It wouldn't necessarily have to be international, it would be great. We've been in the talks about having a domestic trip where we could actually perform. This is not a trip that we're necessarily performing on, but I know that we're, we're interested in doing something at least domestically that we can get the students out performing, and doing what they do best.
I like that. I really like the, you said you're going to be looking at, to see if they can get any credit from the experience as well, or what that would look like, so that, that's interesting.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, a little of that information is here in the packet as well, that I, that I provided to you. But yeah, their, their teachers as well, myself included, could get educational credit for, for doing these types of opportunities. There's professional development through this, and it would be great for the students, since I know so many students are in PSEO or want those types of college credits, it would be a really great opportunity for them to get something.
Any other questions?
Sounds wonderful.
I think it's like, I think it's an amazing opportunity. I believe, yeah.
I was wondering, this includes not just the choir, but also band and orchestra? That's very cool. And then, as you're traveling, obviously hitting music points, will also be like history tied into that, just as it is Europe?
Very much so.
That's very cool.
Yeah, so for, for example, Hero Square, you go and you, you see all the statues that they have that brought, like, come into first kings, to mighty war heroes that they have, and, and it's just like such a cool place, and, and so much history that you get to learn on the trip.
And then, do you know, like, on average, like, bus times per day? Just because, I mean, it is a lot of ground you're covering.
Sure.
Would there be like instructional, like, kind of this, like, someone talking? I know you said there was a travel guy with you, would he be talking during that?
Yep, so we have the local guides per city of wherever we go. Sometimes, the, the group leader that we have will do walking tours with, with the group. It just kind of depends on how much timeframe in the itinerary. And so, like, for example, in Budapest, we get a, a walking tour, and in Munich, we get a, we would get a walking tour where we would walk around different places. So, it's actually more walking. I think, I think, when we, when I did this trip, it was about twenty thousand steps a day I did, because we walked so much to certain places, and it wasn't a lot of time on the bus, which was great. It'll be the most, the most time that we'll spend on the bus is traveling, you know, from, from country to country, which is from what, from what my representative said, it would be two, two to three hours of a, of a trip.
That's not bad.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Yeah, which is kind of cool to think about Europe being that kind of close, and the countries, yeah.
Yeah, very cool.
Yeah.
Sounds awesome.
Sorry to interrupt on this, but is it only open to like nine through twelve, nine to, nine through twelve? Or can, or is the middle school, like choir and orchestra also up?
We're talking about it because this freshman, the freshman class of twenty-twenty-seven would be this year's seventh graders, is that correct? Or upcoming, incoming seventh graders? So, we have talked about, we're talking, well, I should say, Dave and Michelle and I have been talking about whether, and the choir director, the incoming choir director, will talk about if we, if we want to open it up to those middle school students, or if we would rather keep it up, upperclassmen. Yeah. It's a good question.
Yeah, with fundraising, you'd have to tell them.
Exactly, yeah.
That sounds, that sounds awesome.
And then, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're good.
Is there any, is there any, like, requirements or like, like academic standing in order to like make the trip, or like be a part of it?
That's a great question. So, to me, there's, it would have to be, I think, with Matt and Lori's provision of whether or not there would be some sort of, or, and with Mr. Rebnek about any academic standing to go on this trip. There is a contract that you, a behavioral contract that you have to sign and follow that parents also have to be aware of while they're on the trip. And so, that is at least there, as far as being able to know what expectations, and representation of Monticello while you're going on this trip. So, I, that would be a question that I would hopefully get a little bit more information on when I talk to administration. But yeah, that's a great question.
I have one last one.
Yeah.
Let's say you sign up for the trip like your freshman year, and then come and maybe your junior year, if it's around two years of fundraising, you're not in a music class by chance, would that take you away? Like, do you have to stay in music up until the trip?
It would be really hard to punish you, and especially if you're already making payments on the trip.
Okay, so yeah, it would be required that you stay in that class?
We, of course, would highly encourage it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Perfect.
And the goal is to have it hopefully line up with spring break?
Yes.
So, the amount of class time misses minimal.
I'm not sure, I saw it was maybe that last week.
Yeah. I made some hopefully safe assumption in that, thinking that's what it was going to be.
There's nothing else, Board? This is an action item. So moved. Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. Follows in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed, please say no. Motion passes six zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
All right, now we will move on to item number eight, Safe and Healthy Culture. First item is our twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six General Fund Prelim Budget Review by Director of Business Services, Tina Burkholder.
All right, so tonight is our first look at our general fund budget for next year, next school year. We already took a look at our other funds in May, and so now, we are on to the general fund. And just looking at our timeline, where we're at in June, we're not going to ask for approval tonight. We're going to ask for approval at the next June board meeting. So, this is a first look at where we're at. This is a list of our funds that we manage, and within the general fund, we have different funds within that. So, when the state looks at our financial records, it also includes our special ed cooperative, where they purchase the employees from us, and it includes our capital outlay fund, which is where we are putting our insurance proceeds in there to monitor the hail claim that we had this past July. Community service and hockey also have a similar relationship, where when the state looks at our funds, those two funds are combined together. So, with our budget, it represents our best guess or estimates of the revenues coming in and the expenditures going out. We do do a couple revisions. The first revision is in December, and with a final revision in April for our spring approval. This is basically our financial plan, and how we will serve and support our students in the next school year. To start the process, we approved budget assumptions to help with the planning. So, with the revenues, we are assuming an enrollment projection of four thousand thirty-six. This includes our ECESK students, the birth to three students in there, so about forty ADMs in total. So, that gets us to that four thousand mark. And at the end of February, the state let us know that they were going to increase our general education aid by two point seven four percent. Right now, summer unemployment will fund till about the mid of next school year, but there is a separate bill that hopefully will get passed that will approve additional funding for summer unemployment, so we're still waiting on that, unless there's some.
I have a question on that one. You say it's going to be approved, would that then, would there be a gap, additional gap we need to cover? Or would that approval mitigate that gap?
We would have to mitigate that gap.
We would have to cover that gap, the bill would not mitigate that gap, so we would be responsible for that once that bucket runs out. And, do you know when, if it does pass, how long it would be before it's, that lever is pulled to build that back up?
So, if their bill is passed, that'll automatically help fund next year.
Okay.
Our state special education estimate was calculated based on some program shifts between the co-op and Monticello schools. There is a revised compensatory fund formula that changed next school year, and, or this school year into next school year, and future funding is uncertain. Despite meals being free, we still want families to complete the paper applications for reduced benefits. That also helps families with activity fees, or class fees, or anything out in the community and state programs as well. And we have other grants in place, Grow Your Own, MTSS, mentoring, intro to education, and a little bit left in our non-exclusionary discipline to cover the summer. On the expenditure side, we had some staffing changes based on enrollment projections and student needs. So, we reduced six point nine FTEs for enrollment projections, and looked at additional staffing for special ed staffing needs, looked at speech FTEs. We had a lot of open FTEs this year, that hopefully will fill next year. We used contracted services, which was more expensive, so hopefully we get some of those positions covered. There might be some that we have to fill in the gap with contracted services. Looking at additional education support specialists or paraprofessionals with the programs, and then again, shifting a program at the high school from co-op to Monticello, since most of those students are Monticello, and none are coming from Big Lake. Also on the expenditures, we have a lot of contracts that are set to expire at June thirtieth, so a lot of estimates were used for those contracts. Always planning on three certified retirements each year in our general fund. And then, we do know our health insurance has a maximum cap of thirteen percent increase. So, hopefully, we'll have that figured out by probably mid-July on what that will be. Other expenditure assumptions, the other expenses that are non-payroll and benefits type things, supplies, utilities, transportation, that'll increase anywhere from zero to ten percent. We don't plan on borrowing short-term to help with cash flow, and then we anticipate our total expenditures will be about point half percent under budget. Our fund balance assumptions, we have our fund balance policy, where we try to be within eight to sixty percent of our general fund expenditures within that unassigned category. We have a committed severance fund balance that will continue to spend down as severance obligations are known. And with our carryover assigned fund balance, those will be awarded at fifty percent for one year, so at the start of this school year going into next year. Other assumptions, we'll utilize our trust for the non-sunset employee retiree insurance obligations. And then, we had a budget alignment plan of one point six eight five million in addition to the staffing to enrollment alignment to help us hit a target at the end of the next school year. Any questions on the assumptions before diving in? So first, we're going to look at the general fund, the O1, the main account, that includes all our instructional activities, district administration, student support, instructional support, our operations and maintenance, pupil transportation, all that is in this general fund. So, on this slide, I'm just going to look at the, the top five or six lines. That includes our general fund revenues. So, overall, our revenues in the general fund O1 will be sixty-one point one million. That is an increase of one point seven million. And just looking high level for like the board level of what changed, or what is changing. Our local property tax revenue is pretty flat, it's similar with no changes in property taxes, our property tax levy, and our enrollment. Our other local source revenue went down a hundred fifty-six thousand. A lot of that's due to that one-time wellness credit that we received this year. And then, also, a co-op special ed lease that we had to do the foundation through. Our portion was paid with our bond referendum, but Becker and Big Lake had a lease payment that we posted, and so that was paid out this year, so we won't see that next year. The biggest jump is in our state sources, where our special ed expenditures are rising, and also with the shifting of programs from the co-op to Monticello, that is causing us to be above the floor minimum of the revenue calculation. So, we are generating more special ed revenue and more cross-subsidy aid to help with that. We're also looking to utilize our federal special ed funds different. So, because we are above the floor, looking to use our federal special ed funds to offset the tuition costs that we have, that will also help increase that state source for special ed. On the federal side, it went down due to our COPS grant being complete, that where we were the fiscal host for the co-op schools. Again, that's a federal special ed shift from federal to state. And then, also, last summer, we were the host of a migrant program, and we aren't doing that this summer. Any questions on revenue, and then just how it looks? The majority of our revenue coming in comes from the state, with the next largest source coming from local property tax.
I just want to make a comment that us being the fiscal host for the co-op means that the three districts that we co-op with, all the funds run through Monticello and come through Monticello, but it's a break-even budget, correct?
Yep, and that'll be a couple slides down too. Expense, on the expense side, where we see our changes, our expenses went down overall to sixty million point, sixty point eight million, or a drop of six hundred eighty-four thousand. So, you see a lot of that is with salaries and employee benefits, not a lot of change there. We did reduce, but we also see, you know, we'll see increases in the contract settlements, and that is yet to be determined. Employee benefits increased, we had our insurance that will go up, again, to be determined, but that'll be planned for active and retiree employees alike, we'll see a change. And then, the TRA employer contribution, that'll increase from six point seven five percent to nine and a half percent. So, those are the major changes in salaries and employee benefits. Under purchased services, that went down one point three million. A lot of that's due to our long-term facility maintenance projects. We saw a lot of projects last year compared to going into next year. We are working on trying to coordinate a plan with the insurance money and our LTFM money, what makes sense, how to move forward, to coordinate all that together. Not a lot of change in supplies and materials. Capital outlay decreased again to that COPS grant going away, that special ed lease payment going away, and shifting our tech staff from, to capital. Any questions on expenses? Again, the majority of our budget's people, eighty percent salary and benefits, and then the remaining being supplies, repairs, transportation, et cetera. So, overall, our revenues are exceeding expenses, about two hundred fifty-five thousand, about what we expected with the forecast. So, overall, the fund balance is increasing from five point seven million to six million. And that fund balance is broken up into different categories. We have restricted fund balance, which is determined by state statute and the rules and regulations that they have in place. We have the assigned and committed fund balances that are approved by the board or administrative level, depending on the amounts. And then, our unassigned, non-spendable fund balance will, is projected to be about four point three million, or about seven point one percent. So, we're shy of what we were trying to hit, that eight percent mark.
Which Tina, compared to other schools, eight percent's a very low number?
It's low, it's, I mean, one month of salary and benefits goes out, it's five million. So, with state shutdowns, I think schools are safe, but you never know. I mean, we still get our payments coming in on the fifteenth and thirtieth, but you never know. I mean, we still get our payments coming in on the fifteenth and thirtieth, but you never know. But we still want that money coming in, so you wanna have a a reserve or cash bounce to help mitigate that as well. And you know, with enrollment projections, you never know who will show up. We don't know what the legislation is gonna approve this coming week or two. Um, so projecting the best and hopefully we can absorb anything that comes our way. But there's not a lot there to absorb.
Great, well, what's a typical fund balance for most schools? I know our policies would like to stay around eight, but.
I don't have it off the top of my head, but I know there's like a s- an average out there that I can look at and have for next time. All right, next to our capital projects fund, which again includes our July two thousand twenty four here hill claim. So not a lot of activity here, projecting interest revenue coming in and project repairs going out. Um, so going into this school year, it's just those insurance proceeds sitting there waiting to be used. Um, so projecting two million being spent again, it's hard to know without the projects of what's gonna, where do we wanna start and how do we want, how do we wanna handle it during the summer, during the school year of what can be accomplished? So the revenue, it's basically interest revenue on what's sitting there and then uh project expenses going out. A lot of the repairs, it's needed here, um, so projecting a lot of those first projects happening at the middle school. Any questions on that one? About, yeah, I'll take questions at the end too. So, uh, last fund in this category, our special and cooperative fund. Again, they purchase their employees from us, so basically the revenue coming in is them paying us and the employee cost going out. So it's a break even fund, like our chair mentioned, about twelve million of coming in and twelve million going out and not having a fund balance. So overall, it's that other revenue, the co-op paying in, a little bit of offset with state and federal revenue. And then going out is our salary and benefit cost of the purchased employees. And like I said, at the next board meeting, I'll summarize all the funds or I can do a detailed presentation, but our lovely guests might not be here during that presentation. Uh, just a board summary of all the funds again and then asking for approval at that June sixteenth meeting. Final chance, questions?
What are you most concerned about?
Um, I'm most concerned about our compensatory funds. Um, they changed that from looking at it as the families that fill out the paper applications and the Medicare or Medicaid applications and moving forward, it's just the Medicaid applications. And the federal government has changed the income limits of that. And so more people might fall off of that, cause it was frozen for a while at the COVID level. And so if more families are coming off that, that might decrease it more. And we didn't get to know our revenue, I think, until it was mid-January. And that was hard to wait. Normally, we would see previews, October, November, like monthly to lead up to that, to check what's our enrollment? Do we have everybody in the right spots? And they won't even release that estimate until January, when you couldn't go back and change any enrollments. So I'm just, I'm more worried about the compensatory revenue in the future.
Can we just wait and see, or do we have any?
Well, right, right now I have what, so we know our revenue going into next year is it's one point seven million. This year, we had two million, so we dropped a little bit, three hundred thousand. But after that, you know, I don't know, it's hard to know what our population will be and where other schools land, just because maybe our population grew, maybe other schools' population grew as well. It's just hard not to know how it all shakes out.
Any other questions that come? All right, Tina, you wanna stay up there for this next part? All right, so the next part is the resolution relating to revoking the existing referendum revenue authorization of the school ju- district and approving a new authorization and calling an election thereon. The full resolution is attached in the agenda. I would like each board member to read one or more of the whereas statements from the resolution. These statements outline the reasoning and the purpose behind the resolution and help illustrate why the board is considering its approval tonight. The board liaison wrote your name next to each section that you will read. We're not going to read the entire resolution because it's technically in nature, technical in nature, and there isn't a legal requirement for us to do so. A public inspection copy of this resolution is available on the table in the back of the boardroom over by Deb and me, if you're looking for that. So we'll move into reading our whereas statements and I will start. Whereas the mission of the Monticello Public Schools is to develop well-rounded individuals and responsible citizens who excel in leadership and achieve at the highest levels, which requires highly effective teachers and staff addressing the unique needs of each learner in partnership with parents, students, and a unified community and.
Whereas over the last six years, our budget challenges have never left us. The district has unsuccessfully gone to the voters two times into twenty nineteen and twenty twenty one. Failed referendums have led the administration to find short-term solutions to postpone major cuts. Using the grant application process, the Monticello School District secured over four million dollars in grants. Unfortunately, grants are never long-term solutions and they leave the district with the same problems that existed when the school board requested voters to approve additional revenue generating support. And whereas strong communities have strong schools and projecting the values of Monticello Public Schools requires stable funding and operations at a time when state funding for education in Minnesota has not kept pace with inflation and.
Whereas according to the Minnesota Department of Education, the average voter-approved operating referendum in Minnesota is one thousand one hundred forty seven dollars per student. And whereas funding education in Minnesota shared responsibility between state, federal, and local revenue, Monticello Public Schools' current voter-approved operating referendum is seven hundred twenty five dollars and twenty seven cents. Whereas high-quality teachers and staff are critical to high levels of student achievement and success, yet the district has had to cut two point one million in over tenfold teaching staff positions and many partial positions as projected to use programs services by over six million over the next two years in order to balance its budget, which would result in larger class sizes, reduce opportunities, and critical support for students.
Whereas our community faces critical workforce shortages, including but not limited to skilled trades, daycare, manufacturing, engineering, healthcare, and teaching, and our students need to be well-educated and career-ready to fulfill the needs of our community and society. And whereas professional audits and state reports continue to prove that the district's finances, facilities, operations, and instructional areas show a revenue problem to be a significant barrier for the district in fulfilling its mission to provide a high-quality education to every Monticello student.
Whereas the school board begins its timeline to hold a referendum in November twenty twenty five to increase its general education revenue by one thousand one, one thousand five hundred fifty per student and use that revenue to hire and retain high-quality teachers and support students, which help to reduce the projected class size, maintain and improve student opportunities, provide student support, and use that revenue to support vocational, technical education and college readiness by maintaining vocational, technical, and career classes, opportunities for students to earn college credits, apprenticeships, and whereas if the proposed referendum is approved by voters, the school board is committed to make reductions in other areas of revenue to include student parking fees at the high school and.
Whereas our children are the people who who will carry our community forward. They will one day lead our cities, schools, businesses, churches, states, and nation. They are the future of our society, humanity is in their hands, and an educated citizen is essential to a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. Whereas our school board listens to our citizens and are bringing forward a transparent revocation of our current levy in order to bring forward a new levy honoring a government of the people, by the people, and for the people.
Now, therefore, be it resolved by the school board of independent school district number eight eight two, state of Minnesota, as follows. The school board hereby determines and declares that it is necessary and expedient for the school district to revoke the school district's existing referendum revenue authorization of seven hundred and seventy five dollars per adjusted pupil unit and to replace that authorization with a new authorization of one thousand five hundred and fifty per adjusted pupil unit. As provided by law, the ballot question must abbreviate the term per adjusted pupil unit as per pupil. The additional revenue will be used to finance school operations and the property tax portion thereof will require an estimated referendum tax approximate rate of approximately point one six two six nine percent of the referendum market value of the school district for taxes payable in twenty twenty six, the first year it is to be levied. The proposed referendum revenue authorization would be applicable for ten years and increase each year by the rate of inflation commencing with taxes payable in twenty twenty seven, unless otherwise revoked or reduced as provided by law. For this purpose, the rate of inflation shall be the annual inflationary increase calculated under Minnesota statutes, section one twenty six C point one seven subdivision two B. The question on the approval of this referendum revenue authorization shall be school district question one on the school district ballot at the special election held to approve this authorization. And this is an action item.
So move. Second.
Moved by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Mark Branson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes six zero. We will now move on to item C, which is uh a breakdown of our facility conditions assessment report from Kraus Kraus Anderson. So I'd like to bring up the team to come forward with director of buildings and grounds, Terry Woodworth, and then just introduce yourself as you come to the podium, please.
We'll start, okay, I'm Alex Ballciger. I've been with Kraus Anderson for about nine years, primarily in K through twelve. Came from project management, working with schools. So just is what's got us a little bit more of experience on the project planning side now.
I'm Travis Evenson, uh, facility assessment manager. Been with Kraus Anderson for about three years. Um, I actually came from the school wor- school world. I used to be a director of buildings and grounds and uh some of the stuff that you were kinda going through in your board tonight. I've gone through some of those same things and budget cuts and trying to, you know, build things and fix things, so um.
I didn't know we were revealing our age tonight, but I've been with Kraus Anderson twenty-three years, uh, primarily all in K twelve. And again, I work with Alex and our and our project planning team, work with districts similar to yourself, working through the um deferred maintenance, facility assessments, and other planning needs that you might need um or are looking at from a district perspective.
Good evening, Chair Seaman. Members of the school board, Superintendent Olson, I'd like to introduce, you already met Travis, Alex, and Jason with Kraus Anderson. Uh, Travis and his team have been working closely with the district over the past several months to conduct a comprehensive facility uh condition assessment of all our buildings. This assessment provides an objective and detailed analysis of the current state of our facilities and will help guide our long-term planning, maintenance priorities, and potential capital projects. Kraus Anderson brings a deep experience in educational facilities and Travis will be sharing the key findings from their assessment, including areas of immediate need, project lifecycle costs, and strategic recommendations for maintaining and improving our buildings. Please join me in welcoming Travis, Alex, and Jason.
Well, again, welcome everyone. Uh, it was a pleasure to walk through your buildings. We actually started the process uh early this winter and then were interrupted a little bit with some of the snow and all the good stuff and finally we're able to come through and finish the walks and uh put the pieces together and then review our findings with your key stakeholders. And um here we are tonight and kinda reveal what our findings are and kinda call this our greatest hits tour. So kind of the high-level stuff, uh, and uh we'll get started. So with that, just a disclaimer, um, basically what you'll be seeing tonight is the executive summary. The FCI, I'll explain that when we get to that, the facility condition index. The condition assessment, which is the process that we went through, walking your buildings, inventorying everything. And the FCA, different from like the inadequacies, we're looking at uh light-for-light, apples-to-apples comparison. So, you know, roof-to-roof, rooftop unit, and so on and so forth, and that's how we put our pieces together. And we use uh what um dollars and cents that are, you know, coming in on projects, what the industry stand- standards are setting, so that's how we come up with our dollars. So jumping into this first slide here, a lot of stuff going on. We end up walking uh six of your school facilities included on this one. You'll see on the uh end of our slides is the ice arena, which we understand you don't take ownership until twenty thirty-two, somewhere in there, point thirty. So that that is included, so just under a million uh square fee. Uh, we identified fifty-five point seven million dollars of deferred maintenance uh over the next ten years. Of those, the highest needs are roofing and HVAC. Other uh key key pieces would be site work and building earthwork, which are your parking lots. Included in that would be turf replacement that'll be coming up on ten years within this plan. Uh, the exterior enclosure would be like your building caulk and your brick, uh, window and door replacement. Interior construction would be kind of on the back half of this, that's your carpeting and painting and things of that nature. But you do have a few places where you've got some bathroom renovations where currently they're more of a group bathroom and not individualized and some ADA accessibility, so those pieces are kind of on the backside. Um, on the electrical piece, you do have some switch gear that's coming up on end of life. And it gets to the point where once you can't find pieces and there's about a fifty-four, fifty-five week lead time on some of that stuff, even longer. So just red flags it and just let you know that you're gonna have that coming up. Uh, then audiovisual, which would be some IT-related things with your low voltage, doing kind of a district-wide um upgrade on that. The next, on the upper right, you're gonna see deferred maintenance costs broke down per building, which is your second column over, and then you're gonna see those FCI scores. Uh, and then the replacement cost of each of your buildings. And then the pie graph is just kind of where all the dollars and cents would be going per this ten uh ten years. Now, this is how it's put together now. This, our tool which the district gets, it's in the cloud. So they're able to, as they uh priorities shift or change or something gets changed, they're able to update that. So it's no longer the three-ring binder, so this is an active, ongoing uh tool they can use. So this next is the FCI, again, the facility condition index. And what that is, is basically your deferred maintenance totals over what the replacement cost of that building would be. So if you look at your scores all the way on the right, you're gonna see here in the upper teens to low twenties. Now, this size of square footage and with the amount of things you've got going on, those really show uh what what the district, what the community, uh, what the stakeholders reinvested into your your buildings. It shows that you're taking care of your buildings, you're you're making the worthwhile investments and it's um shows in those numbers. Jumping ahead, you're like, what's this guy doing here with all these crazy colors here? These are the, of the fifty-five million, this is where they kinda grade out. Hundred thousand would be in that critical range and these would be like safety, tripping, hazard, things of that nature. The poor condition where you got a little over twenty-six million dollars, those would be roofing uh and mechanical. A lot of those pieces are in there. And then your fair pieces would be things that would be falling off on the plan later on in the plan. And then your fair pieces would be things that would be falling off on the plan later on in the plan. So this would be the 55 million as it sits today. And you're going to see a blue line across. It's a slow drift across, and then it raises in '28 all the way through 2035. This plan goes on and on, but for this presentation, we just gave you 10 years. Now, to show you what is the red piece on the bottom, that is what the district gets for LTFM dollars to pay for projects. The first six years, it's $750,000. Years 2032 to 2035, it goes up to 1.25 million. So you can see the amount of dollars coming in to fix the things isn't enough to do all the fixes. So just to kind of show you the difference in those colors and what's coming in and what potential for projects would be down the road. So these are those types of things that, this is all 55 million. Again, your roofs are your biggest piece, just shy of 17 million. And then you've got the site work, the exterior, interior construction, HVAC, electrical, and then audiovisual. So now we kind of run through the buildings. At Eastview, you've got about $8.5 million in needs. 2032 would be your biggest year there. And then you've got a little bit in 2033 and '35. Of that, roofing and HVAC are your biggest areas of need. And then this just kind of shows you some pictures. You've got the roofs to be replaced, HVAC, you've got boiler 1 and 2 replacement, some select HVAC replacement, and recommissioning of the HVAC system. And I'll explain this a little bit. This is going to be on for all buildings. One thing we noticed, when we were in the buildings, there was negative air pressure from the building automation system. So doors were pushing open. And speaking with Terry, when they run fire drills, fire alarms, they actually have to shut down HVAC in order for the fire doors to properly close, which, in a fire drill situation, not that big of a deal, but in the event of a fire, it is, because those doors will hold the fire within firewalls, so it can be contained. So can be fixed, it's fixable, it's not a holistic system change. It's coming in, going, doing point-to-point testing on all of your air handlers, rooftop units, within your building automation. And then you've got the electrical switchgear and the audiovisual. Jumping over to Little Mountain, here you're about 6.9. Again, 2030 is your biggest bucket there, and 2034, some dollars on the tail end. Here again, roof and HVAC kind of lead the charge with electrical and a little bit of site work and some exterior work. On the site, site work would be parking lots and sidewalk, exterior enclosure, windows and doors, roof replacements. HVAC would be a boiler replacement, condensing unit replacement, some AHAUs or air handling unit, the recommissioning again. And then you'll have a switchgear at the tail end and some parking lot replacement. Moving on to the high school, biggest bucket of money here. 2028 would be the major dollars with '29 and '30, and '34, '35, there's plenty in there, just about $18.7 million in needs. So these numbers rise up a little bit. Again, site work, exterior, roofs, interior construction, a lot of HVAC, electrical, and audiovisual. So on the site work, again, you've got turf, sidewalk, and parking lot improvements, window and door replacement, roof replacements. Interior construction would be a locker room and a bathroom renovation. HVAC would be boiler replacement, select condensing unit replacements, and the recommissioning again, generator replacement there, and low voltage technology upgrades. Moving on to the middle school, about 9.9, I think it is. 2033, '35 would be the major buckets of money. Here, it would be site work and exterior. Your roofs, you're going to notice that that's a lower dollar amount, but there were a lot of roofs at the middle school that are actually going to be taken care of with that insurance claim. So a lot of those dollars are peeled off, which is a good thing. And then the interior construction pieces, HVAC, electrical, and the audiovisual. So here, for the site work, you've got parking lot and sidewalk replacement. Got some tuck pointing and caulking of the joints, classroom improvements and bathroom improvements, more carpeting and painting and things of that nature. Bathroom would be more IADA and making those types of improvements. Your HVAC would be select HVAC replacement and recommission again, and again, low voltage and IT upgrades. Jumping over to Pine Wood, a little over 9 million. 2031 is where your biggest bucket of money is there. Roofing is kind of the one that's driving everything here. There's a little bit of site work, a little bit of exterior and interior renovation, HVAC, electrical. So here, you've got some sidewalk, some parking lots, the roof replacements, that's left HVAC replacement and recommissioning. Hockey Arena, 2032, 2035 would be some buckets of money. Got about $2.2 million in needs within that building. And some of that stuff may be taken care of by the time you take ownership. Hopefully, that's the case, and that number will come now. But when we were on-site, elevator needs upgrading and the HVAC with the ice, with the refrigerant, the chiller, and the cooling tower. So again, you'll see HVAC, the chiller, cooling tower, and the dehumidification system, and the passenger elevator, and then electrical switchgear.
I'll just jump in on that, just real quick. Just two of those things just came off. So the chiller, and then also, they just purchased a new sample. Casey asked a good question during our facility meeting. Oh geez, you see that money, and it's not ours yet, are they just pushing it off? And the youth association works with the school district. We meet quarterly, and we continue to put things on their capital list to help pay for it throughout during this period of time leading up to 23.
Just to wrap up, kind of what I went through, again, through the six facilities, going over the part of about, you know, $750,000 a year in LTFM dollars coming in for those first six years, roughly 1.2 for the years thereafter. This would allow the district about 10 million in projects over the next 10 years utilizing LTFM dollars. And 55.7 was the overall spend for the 10 years. School, after seeing this, can still move things around and shift and reprioritize, but this just gives you a good tool to kind of go through those processes and, you know, like what buckets, you know, where would you like our dollars to go? This just kind of highlights the tool and everything the district gets. We put everything into what we call the portal, the upper right end. Before we start our walks at each of the building, we do what's called a site interview, where we sit down and write down all the anecdotal information, timing of things, build any pain points in the building. The lower three photos on the left side, that's our stamping process. We use a software called Autodesk Build. It shows us where we took the stamp, what the stamp was, pictures associated with, years, condition, that sort of thing will be there. And then kind of the star of our program is the, our spreadsheet, lower right-hand corner. That's where everything comes together. All the pivot tables and charts are put together there. That's where you're able to move things in and out, change condition as things get replaced as well. Questions or?
I think this is really good. And what, when we kicked this off, the reason why we did this is we needed to make sure that the money we get, we spend it logically. We attack what is needed, the most critical items first, or critical items first. So to your point, this is a template that we'll use in the district and update continuously. It's something the district has never had. And in past times, it was just whatever was, you know, the hot topic. At that time, it's where the money was thrown at, and it was never really utilized in a surgical way on there. So this is a great tool to set up the school and the future boards and the district for success on here. So this is a really good tool.
I know one thing I want to note is that, you know, they had mentioned that we've been doing a good job of allocating our money to keep our buildings in fair, operable condition. Because if they weren't, then, you know, once they hit the red, that's when they suggest full replacement of the building. It's not just fix, patch up anymore, it's full replacement. And I think the biggest thing I'm looking at here is, number one, it sets us up for the future, like Casey was saying, but it also really lets us know as a district and the board financially, our needs and order to keep our buildings in good operating order, so we don't have to build new buildings because they get in such disrepair. So, you know, we're looking at what our long-term, what our funding is for these projects, our long-term facility budget, and it's not much. So it's interesting to see what the needs are in the next 10 years versus how much we get from the state.
And then this spreadsheet will be available in the public as well, so all of access. It will go through every line, every column, look at every asset, every location. And we'll see all, everything that the school district has, and the level of where it's at. One question I did have, in the DM dash file under column B where it says order of ops, that's priority 1, 2, 3, 4. You may have covered it in the slide, but just the assumption is priority number one is the one that you guys recommend first? Or is it what's passed, it's useful life the most, which one is it?
So that's a, that's a great question. That's a process that we use just to get it started. Typically, when we do the process, everything usually with ASHRA and IFMA standards, which is life expectancy. So a lot of things are 20 years, 25 years. Will come into whatever district we're working with. A lot of those dollars will fall into the first two years, first three years. So you're going to get some big graphs. So then we go through and we mark out 0 to 2 years are priority ones, 3 to 7 are twos, and 7 to 10 are threes. And then from there, we do a rebalance and work with Terry on doing some of the rebalancing. So the priority ones would be mission critical, kind of the recommissioning, you know, that's a priority one. Roofs, you know, priority one, priority two, depending on when they fall into, and anything HVAC-related. The rest of it, the threes, anything four would be kind of off the plan in years 11 through the next. You could go priority four, five. And sometimes those priority fours will sneak up and jump back, you know, when something just goes out and you need to replace it. If you've got a boiler that's 15 years old and it just goes bad, and it was set to be replaced, you can move that up the line. That's kind of how that works with the priorities.
So for example, there's a switchgear here that was installed that says in 1970.
Yep.
Here, there's another one that was installed in 1978. And then I do see one air handler unit that was actually installed in 1953, and it's still running.
Yep.
Still using that? So it gives you an idea of how old some of this equipment is, that we're still maintaining and running.
This will just need.
I read the comment.
For the record. If I could add one.
But my point is, there's so many things that are old, and while they are past their useful life, the district has been keeping them up to speed as long as possible.
Hundred percent.
And I think that's important to note, because even in that spreadsheet, and like you said, Travis showed it, there's a spreadsheet that's part of this process, and the balancing and rebalancing. If you go through and look at your priority ones, the 55 million is a big number, and we get that, and nobody is going to go after that all at one time. If you look at your priority ones, you're on that $17 million of things that fall in that first two, three years. And I think that's important to look at, is you start looking at what's your plan for next steps. And even when you get to that stage, that $17 million, and it's typical of most districts, you can only do so much with the LTFM funding that you have. And when you get to that point where there's that, of that amount of work in a short span, is there a referendum in the future? What does that look like, what's in that? And then again, is the $17 million right? Like you said, you have some equipment that probably has a life expectancy of 20 years that's ran for, what is it, 50 years, whatever it's been, plus. So if there's not issues with that equipment, it's good to keep on the list to monitor and check. But you may be able to even reprioritize that $17 million to a number that makes more sense for the district and community. And that's just part of that process. That continues to stay. And then I think Travis touched on it too, nothing ever comes off of that list. So as you replace it, you replace the date. And then in 20 years, so this long-range plan or 20-year plan stays live and active forever. As long as it's updated, you'll always have a 10-year plan that you're looking at to know where to budget and start looking at where some expenses might be coming.
That's the exciting part, I think, for many of the administration, especially folks that have been here for years, because our current capital process, you know, puts things just on a sheet of paper.
Yep.
And so then you are monitoring, it's where it goes and where it drops off. So it's really neat to be able to see a tool that actually counts for everything.
Yeah, we're excited about it, because not too long ago, we were that way too. Here's a three-ring binder that tomorrow, after you read it, it's old and outdated, and it doesn't make sense where this tool gives you, it's an actual tool that you can use. Like I said, if you're continually updating it, it'll never go outdated, so it's a good process.
Over 1,500 assets that are listed that we have that are in draft. So it's a big amount of tools. 1,500-plus items that need to be addressed.
Yeah.
To plan it out.
And like I said, yeah, and that's an inventory of everything you have in your building. Some things might happen 10 years from now, 15 years from now, but you want to keep everything on that list, just so you're monitoring it for any future needs that you might have.
Yep. So the 1,500 is what's on the spreadsheet?
Yes, correct.
Can we go back to page six? That was when you made your comment about the colorful guy that you are, remember that?
Oh, yeah.
That was funny. That's perfect. So on the condition of items, level five, critical, we've got $100,000 and change there. To find out what that $100,000 is, do we go right to the spreadsheet? Or is there some, I don't see anything else in the power point.
So on that one, you can just go right to the spreadsheet?
Okay.
And you can put, those will be critical, those will be critical, and the condition's going to be high. So you can filter them out that way. And those items would come right up for you.
Can we just add a hyperlink that does it automatically, no base in the sheet, you click on it?
We don't have that hyperlink. It's something that can be done.
For sure. If you're making the pivot tables, you could do some out of the hyperlinks, right, Casey?
Well, it's a hyperlink that they, it's running a, it's running a script update file based on two clicks. So it's more than just a hyperlink.
Well, our critical looks better than our poor.
Yeah, for sure.
Well, that even goes to say, when we were doing inventory, like a lot of things were that 2016, 2017 investment that you did make, which is, would greatly help, really.
So all those pieces are inventoried as well. It's, you know, you're just not going to see them 20, 30 years down the road. So they're in the plan, they're just not dollars allocated to them right now.
That's great, that's what we were looking for, don't you?
Yeah, because what we're trying to avoid is low spending, low spending, and then a massive unplanned list of failures of items that we haven't ever accounted for. But the secondary part is, if we know there's a handful of items that are going to fail or we're planning or all of them, then we can replace them before they fail on there, so. You can put the public to see all this as well, so they can go through everything, see exactly where their dollars are going, how we're going to find them. That's the intent of why we're here, so thank you for thinking about it.
Any other questions for Travis on the assessment? Otherwise, we had one slide just to kind of talk next steps as you start to move forward, as you went through today and talked the operating levy. A couple of things, as you look at the facility assessment, and what does that mean? What are those projects, do you think? If any, do you want to try to approach and do you take care of? Kind of a suggestion from us, I guess, is what we've done in the past, what we've seen successful in other districts, is you look to start going out for that operating levy.
As you look to start going out for that operating levy, if you think that there's something else following that, the transparency of starting to message that a bit as you start talking about the operating, I think, is important. Many people that you'll run into on the street don't necessarily know the difference between an operating and a bond. And what does that mean? What can those dollars be used for? To start having that conversation, I think, is important. And then kind of what is the timeframe? There's a, there's a number of things that I think have to happen in the, you know, once you make the decision that you are or are not going to look to do some additional funding to try to capture some of these projects. There's a timing and there's a, there's a number of steps that have to take place for that to happen. Some of the things that we talked about and Travis alluded to in his, you know, he's looking at one-to-one replacements on all the facility or the assets you have in your district. The inadequacy piece is something that we kind of try to plan and work with. And Alex and I worked that piece kind of in parallel with the facility assessment to identify if there's any educational needs within your building, things that you might want, want to or considering adding to different buildings. And through that process, as you, if you were to get a task force involved, it's, you know, what are the things that are important to the community, the district? What things do you take to the next level where you might possibly survey? But just trying to get an understanding of what that looks like. And I'll maybe talk a little bit about some of the adequacy stuff. We did check a hundred.
Yeah, like early on, when we were just meeting to talk about the facility assessment, just doing onsite interviews, there were comments coming forth that we're going more towards adequacy over LTFM dollars. I guess one example offhand is your parking lot right here. Just knowing that this building was once a high school, you still have activities on the high school level here, parent pickup, busing, it's a cluster. So that was one thing we were looking at is just the study of this parking lot alone. Still working through kind of design options there. So just comments like that were showing up. So we wanted to take a look as we're going through both of these efforts. They're eventually going to cross, as Jason said, and how can we kind of maximize our opportunity here if there was a potential bond and maybe overlap of needs? So we looked at that a little bit. We've met more high level on items with directors and kind of gathered some different spreadsheets of different needs and programming that you desire to have and offer to students, but your buildings just don't allow for it. So high level, we've looked at that and then meeting with the city to try to understand the growth. From what I've heard from talking to people in the community is they've been talking about growth forever, but you haven't actually seen it happen yet. And meeting with the city to try to understand, okay, where are a lot of these developments happening? A lot of it seemed to happen around the Little Mountain area. What does that mean for you? Are you going to be proactive or reactive? So high level, we just looked at some of these elementary schools and did our own study of what your current enrollment is and class section sizes specifically at the elementary schools. Without digging in and, you know, interviewing principals and things like that is something we want to do. It looks like you do have the space for that, but maybe you're just not utilizing certain classrooms in the way that you could. But that's kind of just high level before we really dig into the adequacy pieces. What else for anything with the task force information or nice steps there?
Yeah, I think maybe just something to keep in mind is if you look at that as a next step, there's a long burn for what that means. And a lot of times we start talking about if you're going to do something significant and there's the adequacy side or there's a referendum. You're, from a referendum date that you pick, there's a review and comment process that gets submitted about four and a half months prior to the referendum. If you go through the task force, you're probably invested two, three, maybe four months of time with that task force group. So as you look at things and when you think this might happen, I don't think it's too early to start having the conversation. Obviously, nothing, no decisions have to be made. But we just wanted to offer some of these suggestions that we see in some other districts. And if there's ways that we can help all through that process, we'd love to do so.
And we worked with districts having five, six, 10, 20 different options and putting budgets to that to make decisions. And then just having kind of that comprehensive review of how we got to the place, whether it's your deferred maintenance needs or educational adequacy and show you how we got there in the well-thought-out plan that was supported by community members, staff, teachers, leadership.
You know, for me personally, I get anxious, you know, making sure that you have applied and planned for a future. And to be able to sit and have you guys look at our buildings and our interior spaces and be able to show some problem-solving efforts that can be done in each building. That was really reassuring to me. So then it also, it took care of the growth, potential growth when it does come. 200 houses, single-family homes supposedly in the next couple of years here from the city. But then it also takes a look at the exciting parts of those adequacies that, you know, the principals and directors would love to get at. And so lots of, lots of cool information and, and, you know, just a, a future that we can now plan for. So appreciate it.
Give me the spreadsheet here. You have a project complexity modifier that's at zero all the way down. How are you determining, because it's a scaler that's used to calculate the value? How are you determining that's 5%, 10%, 25%?
I'm not sure, there's.
Yeah, it just depends on what's going on in the project. So and if it's, it can be, yeah, to scale it, if you've got three-story and you've got a rooftop that needs to be brought in, you can put on an additional 20% just with all the factors of bringing in that crane service. So that's kind of how we use that when we need. So in this one for right now, there was nothing really put into there. Everything was pretty straightforward.
I think it's a tool you use too as you move forward with planning projects and design that's more helpful.
And as a percentage on the bottom too, there's, as you get out those five, 10 years, there's inflation factors figured into those numbers. At our, at our best, yes, assuming there's no COVID coming in. We try to anticipate what that might look like over the next years.
Any other questions or comments?
I was hoping Lila or AT would have a question. I told Travis after the last time, man, you're in trouble.
Come on, Lila.
They got one of those. They'll take a chill. Yeah, I, I warned him when we were sitting back there, I'm like, man, you are in trouble tonight.
I guess I do have one question. How pressing are some of these things? Like obviously, I know you put it to scale, but like with roofing, I at least know at the high school, like there are buckets on the floor. And I'm wondering like how pushy should we be about these things? And have you found like good ways of like marketing these things that, no, we've talked about before when pushing to raise money? People want to see, like they want to see a building that go up, they want to see things being done. Like have you seen what other schools have done potentially that would work for our district? When we're thinking about like what to tackle first that would get people to fund?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question and I knew, I knew that was coming. But I think it's important, part of that process is identifying what are those most urgent needs that you have. Part of that is in through the task force process, through a survey process with your community, what is the, what is the amount of dollars that may be supported by the community? And then you typically have to re-prioritize again. But I think the biggest part of that is once you just make the decision that you're going to do, whether it's just facility maintenance projects, you're going to do adequacy, there's things that are going to change within the district. I think it's important to tell that story. And part of that, in a successful referendum investor, on you go, is being able to tell that story and show those conditions that you have. Because you are, you're asking people to step up and increase their taxes to support the project. And if you don't have a good why, I mean, that's what we start out with these task forces. What is your why? Why are you, why, why do you think this is important? And you need to be able to tell that story. So definitely those things like that are high priority. Roofs are expensive. And so a lot of that is when you have 750,000 dollars a year, it's not uncommon and it's typical across districts that you have to defer a lot of that stuff out. And then you're trying to deal with them as the issues happen. Where if you have a number of roofs that are starting to fail and coming to that end of life, there's an opportunity to try to get, grab a big chunk of that work to not have buckets in your auditorium and in your high school.
But it's, it's very thorough and I think it'll be good, like that you can now use it for future reference and it's not just the one time. Yeah, and you mentioned how there are opportunities the high school could have to add programs with different designs and stuff. Would you see that pulling other people? Like have other schools had it where after renovations, they saw any growth or it opened up more opportunities? Like that would be worth considering, like marketing towards that or not?
No, I think a lot of that comes from the CTE side. Most recently, the career tech, I think a lot of communities start to look at what are the businesses in our community? What programs can we offer that maybe other strong schools don't offer? And I do, I think that's important. I think a lot of times with the open enrollment, kids have the opportunity to go wherever they want to go. And so if there's some programs that are offered that maybe differentiate you from other schools, I certainly think you can see that as an opportunity for kids.
Very cool. You handled it well.
I tell you, we get the opportunity to talk to a lot of boards and a lot of, a lot more boards are having students at the table and you guys do a great job from what we've seen in others.
We lucked out with this.
Yeah, I think that's great. You guys asked really good questions, so.
All right, awesome, anything else? Well, thank you for your work that you've done and that I'm sure you'll continue to do for us as we find more needs and help coming up with some of our plans. But this has been fantastic and we're really grateful for your guys' hard work.
Appreciate it, thanks for having us.
Sorry, I just wondered, what we're thinking too is with Carl Sanderson is there was a, a process we went through to select Carl Sanderson as over, there was four companies who went through, went through past projects, interviews with the different companies, how do they, how do they do the projects? Where are they proposing? Where are we going to get for the dollars that they're asking for? And this team here got us the most with the dollars that were required. There's no question, the team that we found in that process, so.
And being able to continue utilizing it, like set other boards up for success because we won't be around here for forever, but.
And it sounds like we're going to get long-term benefits from this too.
All right.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll move on to item D, our second reading of policies. I'd like to invite up Director of Human Resources, Rob Daniker.
Would it be too soon to say Chair Sharma? Is that too soon? Someday, we'll get there, yeah, we got time. Chair Stephen, members of the board, Superintendent Olson. So very abbreviated list of policies for tonight. And just a brief explanation for those who weren't with us at the last meeting. We have a relatively urgent request come forward, somewhat atypical, but not monumental in terms of the scope or the seriousness of it, to consider policy 710 and a minor adjustment to it, which I'll explain in a second. But then also by design, we are not bringing forward a series of first reads of policy tonight because the policy committee met today, as we do, and we've tried to make it a tradition early summer, which it is summer now crazily, but to review our student handbooks and our employee handbooks and our activities handbooks. And so the policy committee was busy doing that work tonight. And so on June 16th, we'll be bringing forward the elementary and middle school handbooks for board approval along with the employee handbook. The high school handbook is tentatively scheduled to come back to the policy committee in August. And then I think TBD on activities and more to come on that. So just in terms of what we're spending our time as policy committee on, because again, there's not a swath of first reads tonight. So second read tonight for policy 710, this is extracurricular transportation. The purpose of this policy is to make clear to students, parents and the staff, excuse me, and staff, the school district's policy regarding extracurricular transportation. And so two meetings ago, our FFA advisor, Jacob Wilts, presented. And in his presentation, he alluded to the fact that policy 710 strictly defines employees as employees, those receiving a paycheck for work with the district. And so he advocated at that meeting that we explore broadening that definition. So that's what's, what we brought forward at the last meeting as a first read, just a, a new clause in this policy, which would be Article II definitions. And it states as follows, for the purposes of this policy, employees shall include volunteers who prior to beginning service to the school district have satisfied the appropriate background screening and vetting requirements. And so with approval tonight, this is an action item. Again, that employee definition would be more broad for the purposes of extracurricular transportation and actually allow those volunteers who had gone through the proper vetting to drive for the school as well.
Second.
Moved by Casey Root, seconded by Jeff Peigley. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes 6-0, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and that brings us to our last item, which is adjournment of our regular meeting here. It is 6:41 PM. We will be following with a work session, which we will have a five-minute break and I get started in our work session. And our next board meeting will be Monday, June 16th at 6:00 PM. Hope to see you all.